Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Eliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, welcome. Lorraine County Commissioners Board Meeting, January 17, 2018. If you can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Commissioner Lundey.
Our word of inspiration for the day, don't despair over your shortcomings, start over each day. You make spiritual progress by continually beginning again and again.
And we normally have a dog right now, so let me just jump in real quick. We don't have a dog this morning, but if you watch our meetings on TV, you will see all the dogs that were luckily adopted in 2017, so photos of all the dogs adopted, so...
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Need to move that to our Facebook account and all social media, too, please.
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
At 9:45 we'll have a presentation by Developmental Disabilities, Under Resolutions, Number One, Investments None, Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within Jurispricings Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Commissioner Kahlo. I do have a few issues to speak with the Board with regard to personnel, potential hires at Job and Family Services, workforce development, possibly the collection center, also a brief discussion, continue our contract negotiations at the Sheriff's Department. Also, we have a further executive session, we have a pending legal matter, and also, I'm still working on a purchase of real estate issue I want to update you on, and maybe a sale of real estate, if we have time. So all of those matters are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, go into executive session, we discuss those matters that I've identified. Thank you.
A peremptory reading of the Minnesota January.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Point Jonathan Reichel is Lorraine County Apary Inspector for the year 2018. The total annual appropriation is $3,400 with mile reimbursement of $0.52 per mile, and he's here today just to...
Yes, he is.
He is.
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Reichel? Join us up here, introduce yourself, tell us what you do for us.
Chases down apes, right?
Look, I'm sure it's not give your guy a chance to not cut my head off who's running the panel. I'm John Reichel, and I am officially your Ohio Department of Agriculture Deputy Apary Inspector for Lorraine County. What that means in more familiar terms is I'm your bee guy. I'm officially a county contractor. You approve me and provide budget is just approved for me, but I'm also trained and monitored or approved by the Ohio Department of Agriculture. I perform inspections mainly looking for diseases and pests that affect our local beekeepers, and you only have to drive a short way down to the chain to see how important that is for our county. We have approximately 170 aparies in Lorraine County last year, which constitute about 750 total hives. And we do have some problems in Lorraine County, the bees do have problems. Anybody who picks up a newspaper or looks at the internet knows the bees aren't doing too well. And this was not a great year for bees weather-wise, and I'm a little concerned about the weather we've had, to be perfectly frank, for my own bees and others. But we're doing well. I've been tracking down some foul brood issues, particularly in the town of Oberlin, and I'm still working on those. But bees are doing okay. 2016 was a great year for bees, at least for beekeepers, as they mostly measure their quality of their beekeeping by the amount of honey they got, which was good last year. 2017 was kind of a so-so year for our bees, but we're still trying. We get at our Lorraine County Beekeepers Association, we probably get 100 new people at the beekeeping class every year. And one of the biggest things I wanted to do today was just thank you for supporting the state program. Not every county has an inspector, and in fact, our two neighbors, Medina and Erie, do not have inspectors. So if you ever meeting with other Commissioners, you might put a little jab in for us, because that creates a lot of anxiety for beekeepers that are near those counties. When a problem arises, going through the registration of aparies and going and looking for people and checking out their aparies, because a lot of them are hidden, people hide their aparies for lots of reasons. If you can't find people that have a problem, the bees pass those problems around, a lot of them are infectious, so they need to be tracked down. So thank you for continuing to support this program. I'm really, I consider myself a volunteer, as has been every inspector before me, and kind of a semi-supported community service, so far it's been a pleasure. Do you have any questions?
Appreciate it. We just know there's always been issues with the bees, I mean, the last decade, talking about the concern with the bee population and how important it is in regards to pollinating our flowers. It's just, we appreciate what you do for a little bit of money you get paid.
Our solid waste department also has been planting a lot of pollinator gardens around Lorraine County, too, so all that we can do to help.
Every little bit helps.
I know we worked on this issue a lot when I was in Columbus, because there was a great concern about it, and I was just wondering if you could elaborate a little bit more about the concern you have about the impact of the recent weather on the bee population.
The very cold weather's difficult. This was an up and down year for bees because of good weather, then wet weather, then good weather, then wet weather. The bees just, you know, in early year, everybody thought their bees were just going to explode this year, they were already planning on splitting their hives, which is how you propagate your own bees, which is something we want to do rather than importing bees from California or Georgia, because they don't know how to live there anyway. So the best thing beekeepers can do is to, you know, create a second hive by splitting a hive. There's lots of ways to do that. But then the weather turned cool again in the spring, and then it was wet, and then it was warm, and then it was wet, and then it was cool, and the bees just never really seemed to take off. And I saw an unusual number of what's called a small hive beetle this year, and a lot of beekeepers, particularly new ones, when they lose a hive, they'll say, "Oh, man, the yellow jackets killed my hive," or "The small hive beetle killed my hive." And that's not truly the case. What happens is when a hive gets weak, the pests come in. Everybody wants that honey, those bees have got to protect their hive. So the weather was a big issue this year, even personally in my own aparies, I have two of them. I was not impressed, I was a little worried. I combined some hives at the end of the year, and now we had this bitter, bitter, bitter cold. The bees don't, you know, hibernate, they're alive the whole time in there, they ball up into a little ball, and they slowly die through the winter, and you hope that by the time spring arrives, there's enough bees there to kick off that hive and go again. But when we had this real nice weather, for instance, last two weeks ago, now seems like forever, the Thursday when it was so warm, people were in checking their hives, moving honey around, trying to make sure the hive's in good shape, and I just saw a lot of stray reports of people saying, "Man, I lost, you know, I had five, lost three already." And, you know, we'll go through this cycle two more times before the season's up. So you kind of, every time it's sunny, it's going to be sunny Saturday, hopefully people are feeding their bees, they come out, there's obviously nothing natural to eat, so you put out some feed for them in the form of sugar water, sometimes with vitamins or some other things in it. The bees have to, you know, literally come out and go to the bathroom, I mean, they've been locked up for weeks in there, so they go nuts, they come flying around, they get caught in the snow. It's kind of a frantic week for them, and that's one way to check their progress now without busting into a hive, which can, you know, be dangerous for them. But it's, this cold weather's going to be tough this year.
Wow, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Entering agreement with the Kihaug Group Maple Heights to provide a full-service vending program to various county facilities effective February 5, 2018, through January 31, 2019, and can only shall receive 16% commission on net vending sales.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Adult probation approved grant in the amount of $364,156 with the Ohio Department of Rehab and Correction, Division of Parole and Community Services, Bureau of Community Sanctions for 407 non-residential felony, no cash match required, so total grant is $1,827,400.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Approved grant in the amount of $9,018 with the Ohio Department of Rehab and Correction, Division of Parole and Community Services, Bureau of Community Sanctions for 408 non-residential misdemeanor, no cash match required, total grant is $204,890.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Under the engineering executing cooperation agreement with Village of LaGrange for Lorraine County engineer to pay monthly non-federal and OPWC share invoices to Liberta and Pogomire Design Group and Bill Village of LaGrange for their local commitment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
Madam Clerk, Commissioners, I do have one piece of business for our 911 building that we're presently engaged in building and getting ready for what I hope will be an April opening. That's for the security cameras, access controls. It was on my desk, I was a little late to get in the package. You already had gone through the package and looked at it, and I didn't want to put it in after you had looked at it. That's for Paladin, they had the most responsive proposal to meet our security needs, so I would ask that you take a look at that, and if we can get that approved, to move that along over at 911, I'd appreciate it. I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
As an update, we're working furiously over at that building. Set some pretty aggressive targets. Nobody's happy, which means we're moving well. I'm really looking forward to an open house, probably the last week of April. I'd like to see the public come through the building before we occupy it. It's really hard to be using it and bring people through, as you know, you've been through 911, it's, there's just no way of really doing that and staying focused on the task at hand. I think that after the open house, we'll take a week or two and continue our training, and then figure out how to make our transition from what will become our backup to our new primary location. But I'd like all the bells, whistles, and everything to be working, so, you know, the public can see what they generously and very graciously voted overwhelmingly for in November. I think they'd do that. So more to come on that as we get further down the road here. We sent the bids out, we're waiting on that to come in, but I think that we're going to reach our target, but there's a lot of equipment that's, we're still waiting on, a lot of pieces that we don't control, and I simply don't like that we don't have the ability to move those pieces ourselves. So it's our target, it's our goal, I'm optimistic, but I won't have a better picture of how completely we'll meet that goal, probably more in February. 911 equipment specialized, you just can't go buy it everywhere, and so we're at the mercy of the vendor there. Our consoles are not even going to be delivered until March 15th, and I'm not worried about the, some of the tender loving care inside, you know, we got a couple of new walls, not a lot of work, as you know, inside, most of it, painting, carpeting, cleaning, it was a minor amount of construction work, because it was already built to be a call center, which was fantastic. We're just adding some areas for the records area and the warrants area and so forth that has become part of the overall picture of 911. I'm more worried about the electronics and all of that new equipment, and getting here and getting here on the scheduled delivery dates. But it's going to be, it's going to be a fun project, and I look for a really, really big open house. And since I'm giving updates, the courthouse has progressed nicely. We had extra time, so we took that extra time. There was no reason to push those folks, we were not planning on utilizing that until probably in April. I'd like to see an open house sometime late March, early April, see how the winter goes. And once again, that's a building we really can't have a public open house, once we fill it up with the hard-working folks from Adult Probation, it just really just wouldn't work out very well. And I would like people to come through and, you know, have a nice look at the renovations there. There's not going to be a lot of historical significance inside, there wasn't to begin with. The only thing you could see was, what I want to say is bastardized renovations, two or three major renovations since the courthouse was built that really destroyed anything of historical significance. We did not do that, it was gone. We just took out the renovations of, over the last several decades, and completely put in a new renovation that actually was done correctly. The previous ones, they just partitioned walls, dropped in little ceilings, and you were back on the catwalks back there, it was just terrible, it was hideous. But I think they should be allowed to see the new piece on the back and what we've done back there in accordance with ADA. Folks don't know why we put that back there, we had to. The elevation from grade to the first floor of the courthouse was such that we had ADA problems, we always had problems in that building, we had that little outside elevator, we had a lift, and it didn't work right, and it was, we were not in compliance a lot of the time, so the only way to get in compliance, stay in compliance, we had to enclose that back end and put an inside lift in for folks that have mobility issues. And we looked at ramping, and we would ended up with a ramp out on the street somewhere, because the grade was so steep, people don't realize how high up the first floor of the courthouse really is. What they actually see is the lower level, most of the lower level of the courthouse. So I'm encouraged that we'll have a really grand opening there. I know the work will be done, it's just a matter of trying to pick the right opportunities for the rededication of the memorials that are in front, and also the courthouse, and some other things that I'm going to go over with each one of you individually. So that's going on, and then we have the Drug Task Force building, that's been completed, all the outside work's been completed, we're working on the inside of that. Public won't be invited to go in there, but they can see that building when they're seeing the 911 building, and the work that's been done on the outside and the renovation there. The corner space will not be done, we're not urgently working on that right now, it's in design, and we're talking about design work with that group. And of course, you read today, and everybody read today, you know, something we've been working on since November, and that is getting the final leg of the intermodal transportation center completed. That project has not died, it was always there, but we had urgency elsewhere that we turned our attention to, as we discussed, all of us out here individually. It was a brutal year last year, it was, in fact, the previous 18 months was pretty hard, and that project just kind of inch along on its own, but the funding streams were starting to become very exhausted, and we were in jeopardy of possibly losing some funding on that. So back in November, you know, the decision was made to, you know, blow some life into that and get the sales fully moving and get the ship leaving port, and so it has. So we're out to bid for some professional assistance on that. We normally don't go with the manager on a project like that, but we just don't have the expertise to be up on the high-level tracks up there and doing that kind of work. We need some help on this project. It's really outside of our bailiwick. We've put up buildings, we've renovated buildings, we've done tens of millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of those kind of projects, but being up on the tracks, on the platforms, it's a specialized amount of work, and the trains will continue to run, everything has to move, it's not, we can't shut off, now we closed the road, so that's why we're out for that help. But as a lot of people don't know, we already have the architects, the contracts have been let, they've been working on taking the concepts, the construction documents, they've been working now for a while, and I'm hopeful to go out to bid here in about three weeks for the first set of bids for concrete, it's going to be all prefab concrete, that we're going to use as much prefab as possible, so there's a lot less pouring that has to happen with the trains going through there, so it'll be lifting a lot of the concrete already preformed into place. There'll still be some concrete that has to be lifted in those buckets that they sluice up, and, but I'm hoping that that goes out in mid-February for bid, and we'll award some contracts in March to begin that process. So it's starting to line up nicely. We'll have some things going on transportation logistics-wise, because I've got to work around the Greyhound buses down there that come and go, and we're going to be closing off part of the lot there, so you can see there, that whole area is going to have to be cut off, so I have to talk with them. I'm probably going to relocate Greyhound over to the adjacent parking lot, not to mention that we still have events going on and so forth, so I have to figure all of that out so that I can keep the center open and running. A lot of people don't think it's open and running, but it does, we have quite a bit going on, quite a bit of activity going on there, and so that's just a brief update of a few of the projects. In fact, as a plug, I think Sandy, you have something going on at the center this, in a week or two? You want to tell us about it? I know you shouldn't have came, right?
I didn't realize we were closing part of the parking lot, I didn't think about it, but we have the vintage car show that comes out there every Friday, are we going to notify them that?
I may be able to work around them.
Okay.
The parking lot I'm talking about closing will be adjacent to the embankment wall, because there's construction going to go on there. I may try to work with Spitzer, they have some land behind the fire station there, and stage construction over there on that, you know, the land back there that's vacant, the Spitzer land. I've been toying with options, that would be a good alternative to locate the workers and all the construction material over there, and they haven't used that area in quite a while, I'm sure they would rather us rent it for a while from them than pop it all in all of our parking lots, because I'm going to need those parking lots for events and people coming to the train station as it is. So, but we are constructing.
Yeah.
Adjacent and putting new, so there will be part of that lot right directly behind the center closed off. I have to figure out how to have the events without disturbing the events and making it look like, you know, a major construction site. Nobody wants to have their wedding in that area and be walking to a construction site, so I have a lot of logistics I got to deal with to make sure that we don't interfere with all of that. Sorry, Sandy, I didn't mean, I know you weren't prepared for that, but...
No problem. Sandy Strazek is Executive Assistant to Jim Cordez, County Administrator and Commissioners, and Transportation and Community Center Event Coordinator. But we're excited, because we do have regular events at the center, not as many as we'd like, we definitely would love to have, we'd love to be booked up. However, we do have something that we are partnering with LCC for, and it is on February 11th, and it's going to be our bridal show, so that's exciting, we're so happy to have that. We have vendors already signed up, we're full, we're ready to go. It's going to be February 11th, that's Sunday, from 12 to 3, so we hope that the public will come out, hope that you'll share the word, because it's a great center, we want to show it to everybody, we want to give tours that day, free food's going to be available, a lot of great things going on, so we hope that we'll have a full house.
And it's free to the public, right?
Absolutely free.
It's open house, free.
Right. And of course, you know, my number's 329-5760, that's 440, 329-5760, if you have any questions.
Are you still open for more vendors? More vendors, can they still?
I think we're full, but they can call.
You're full?
We'll find out.
All right.
Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you.
Good job. The, so you know, you can see that once we start construction, I don't want to interfere with what we're doing over there, so I have to figure that out, too. And that's not going to be an easy task, there's quite a bit of construction going on, and then we have to bring services into the new area out of the old building, but we've taken quite a bit of time to get the center up and people utilizing the conference rooms there and the main center, I don't want to lose that traction. And I doubt we're going to have them staged in the parking lot, so I wouldn't worry about the car show so much, but I'll let you know. We've just got to wrap our head around some of the ideas. And one of the things is, you know, I may have to use the front of the building, we've never used the front, it was more ceremonial front because of the sidewalks out there, but it may be a little inconvenient, but we may have to start using that as the front entrance. We'll see. But, you know, that project's going to be starting in earnest once we start getting the concrete bid. I don't have an exact date when the concrete will be coming after its bid, but by that time, we'll have set some goals and milestones for the staging in the beginning timeframes. We're still not complete on the contracts with Norfolk Southern, and the Amtrak contract is just about done. It was minor issues that we were separated on, so I'm not really concerned with that. But Norfolk Southern, I won't say that they're, we'll say it's a bit challenging, they have their priorities and I don't blame them, they're in a completely different business than we are, and rail, transport, and with commerce and passenger rail usually doesn't work well together, and so they would prefer there wasn't passenger rail on those rails, and so their priority is freight, and that's what they deal with first and foremost, and that's what they give priority to, and we're secondary on that, and that's why it's a little bit challenging bringing all the relationships together, but we'll get there, I'm comfortable with that. So that's my report for this morning, thanks.
Well, Jerry do his report, then we'll go into the... Jerry, you want to do your report?
No, I don't have any report this morning, so...
Nobody's suing us?
We did it all last week.
Dr. Fisher?
Good morning, and happy new year. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to be on the agenda to address the request of the Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities to be on the May ballot to renew its 1.6875 mils five-year levy. This levy is a renewal, so it won't cost the taxpayers any additional dollars, but it's critically important to people with developmental disabilities in Lorraine County. We've had shrinking state resources in recent years, and this particular levy represents more than 30% of our revenue. The other thing that's important to recognize is that the federal funding that we pull down requires state or local match, and anymore, most of that match money comes from local sources. So this levy means even more than 30% of our budget because of the federal funding that it pulls down. Before I continue, I'd just like to thank each and every one of you very, very sincerely for your ongoing support of the interests of people with developmental disabilities. I've had an opportunity to meet with every one of you, and every one of you has gone out of your way to support, you know, the interests of our most vulnerable citizens, and that's very, very much appreciated. As you know, Murray Ridge Center, which is the more common name for the Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities, administers, funds, and either coordinates or provides critical lifelong services to about 2,000 Lorraine County citizens with developmental disabilities every year, and that includes infants, children, adults, and senior citizens locally. Did everybody receive the packet that I sent over for the levy recommendation? So I'm not going to get into lots of facts and figures. All of you agreed that it would be okay for us to show at this meeting a new video that really highlights those things that Murray Ridge Center does in our community and how it impacts the people that we serve and the families that we serve. A couple of statistics, though, that I will share, because they're not, they don't come right out in the video, is that we are providing services for nearly 1,000 adults every year in a very comprehensive fashion. We have about 700 adults that attend our Opportunity and Vocational Centers located throughout the county. We have about 250 adults who are receiving support to be employed in community settings. And while we're not directly providing as much of the residential services as we used to, we are funding, planning, and coordinating residential services for hundreds of individuals within the county. We still operate one 16-bed intermediate care facility out on Meister Road, but other than that, even though we're not directly delivering a lot of that residential, we do fund it, and we're very, very instrumental in planning specific individual services with that, unless you have any questions of me prior to showing the video, um, I'm told Jim that, uh, you are the person that I should ask to switch the, the screens.
I can certainly do that for you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
No.
Okay.
Here you go.
Yes.
Woven from the threads of our rich history, its abundance of resources, the ways it enriches lives, and provides opportunities that help us all live to the fullest of our abilities, the Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities is a vital part of that fabric. Commonly known as Murray Ridge Center, our purpose is to provide assistance for county residents with developmental disabilities with services that span the gamut, starting with our early intervention program. We serve any child in Lorraine County under the age of three who has been either diagnosed with a medical condition or determined to have a developmental delay of some sort. Children learn best in their natural routine, so our goal is, when we go out, is to work with the parent. And we coach the parent, we give the parent strategies, help the parent come up with their own strategies, and then they're able to work with their child when we're not there. The beauty of our program is that we have a team of support behind us, including occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech therapists. And we're able to use that team to consult with and to access, so that we're able to provide the best interventions in the home. Our number one goal is to help that parent be their child's best teacher. The next important thread is with ability appropriate education at one of the oldest schools of its kind in Ohio. Murray Ridge School services the 14 different school districts within our county. We've worked with students with developmental disabilities from mild to intense. We may have medical needs that need to be met. We may have physical needs that need to be met, and we also would then worry about the developmental and educational needs that need to be met here. All of our teachers here are very hardworking, empathetic people. They come in every single day with a smile on their face. They are all certified with a special education background. Our preschool class is very unique in that we have students with disabilities paired up with typical performing students. What's special about our school is that we are able to have therapists at any time come in and work with our students who may have needs. It wouldn't be unusual to find a therapist with a student in a Maywalker or in a stand or working on stretching or their gait and trying to make sure that they're using proper techniques and getting them to be as independent as possible. Our speech therapists are able to look at the students and evaluate what their abilities are.
Thank you, Jack.
We're allowing the students to be able to communicate at their level.
I need help.
While the senior wing still focuses on some academics, uh, we really try to work with our students on being as independent as possible. For its CFO, we've created several jobs within our building where the students can punch in. They can deliver pizzas, they can work within the post office, they can deliver mail. They're all going to receive checks in which they have to take to the bank and sign, which looks very similar to what they will have to do later on in life. We absolutely love working with this population of students, and all we wanna do is make sure that they can be as productive and as independent as possible. Just as a fabric is made strong by the threads that form it, Murray Ridge Center is the vital link between those with disabilities and a wide range of other resources and services. The disability department is really important because we help individuals to connect to the community. So that means that we help them to identify what resources are out there available to them and help them to figure out how to access those. We help people to design individualized services that are funded and administered by Murray Ridge. In addition to that, we also help people to develop what we call outcomes or goals, and that might include helping someone to plan a trip or helping someone to, um, start volunteering in the community. Every individual is a little different, so we help them to decide what are the things that they're interested in, what is it that they want to achieve and get out of life, be partying with their gardeners or their parents, family members, any other people that might be important for them. Our adult program at Murray Ridge also offers assigned services, so individuals who choose to attend our day program can access services to find a job. The other side of my job is I work on the behavior team, so I work with individuals and families that are encountering behavioral challenges. This includes children with behavioral challenges as well as adults. Our goal is really to help individuals reach their dreams. There's another way to see the importance of the role we play through the eyes of the families whose loved ones have disabilities.
We have three adult children, two, which receive services from Murray Ridge Center.
Bill's a real fun kid to be around, and, uh, he's got a job here at home. He takes care of animals for me. He helps feed chickens, and he goes to football games with a guy named Murray. We like to go and attend football games.
Mark loves to feed birds. He loves to clean. He loves to do housework. He helps with the mowing and such, and Mark just loves to go shopping. Murray Ridge provides a service and support person, and they come out to the house and check to make sure everything's safe. Paul came out here for one of the meetings and put together a program for Bill and Mark on their individual goals for the year, like working out in the community.
Bill's a funny, he's working at Nancy's Diner over there. He does the dishes for him, and he's really having a good time over there. He likes to eat real well, and they all get along real good. He really enjoys that. Mark, he works at the school, and he, uh, does cleaning every night for three hours, helps the ladies haul all the big, heavy garbage containers out, throws it all away for them so they don't have to do it. And, uh, he really likes working there at the school with the ladies too.
It's like a self-worth that you can't get by just staying at home every day. They both enjoy doing Special Olympics with Murray Ridge. They enjoy their coaches.
Bill, he's been involved with Murray Ridge Sports now for probably 20 years, and Mark, he's gone on 10 to 12 years, and they have a blog on all the different things they're involved in, all the sports and stuff.
The community embraces them, and they know so many people. I don't think we can go anyplace without them knowing somebody.
The fabric that is Lorraine County, proud of its heritage, strengthened by unique people with unique capabilities, people who want the best for themselves and their families, who are willing to give it their all, whatever that all may be, and deserve the opportunity to take full advantage of everything this community offers. Murray Ridge Center, a part of the fabric.
Very nice.
Wonderful video.
Thank you. Are there, uh, any questions of me at all?
I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you do. You know, I've had the opportunity to work with Murray Ridge when I was serving in the legislature and now as a Commissioner, and, uh, try to attend events when I can and, uh, just, you know, and I, I like how you give the students, uh, turn the operations over them, say, hey, this is your dance, this is your event, whatever it may be. You guys work on it coordinated, and, um, the, the, the young adults are just amazing. The children are amazing, and, and, uh, the work that you do is, is just, uh, having a great impact on lives. And we're just so blessed and really fortunate to have such an amazing facility and such an amazing and active, uh, Board of Developmental Disability. So thank you for all that you do.
Well, thank you so very much. And, and like I said, we're truly blessed to have the support of a wonderful Board of County Commissioners and Jim and, you know, the administration. Um, it helps us a great deal, so thank you.
We, uh, just so the public knows, we also participate in your programs. So we, we have a great relationship at our collection center. It works out real well. Some of our finest workers come from your program and also over at Job and Family Services. So it's been very successful. I would encourage people that see this and maybe have the opportunity to, um, uh, partner with us for, for workers. It's, it's a really great program. Uh, not only do you, 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 um, have the ability to get your work done, but it's also very rewarding to give somebody a hand up, uh, that just wants an opportunity. So, uh, I'm gonna put a shameless plug in, uh, for your program out there for, uh, for, for workers. Uh, and maybe you can give them the number to call and the person to contact, if that would be okay?
Yeah, Jim, thank you so much for that. I appreciate, I appreciate your employing some of the folks that we serve. And, uh, if anybody is interested in employing a person with a developmental disability, you can contact Murray Ridge Center at 440-329-3734 and ask for our Supported Employment Department. Very important. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion in a second to approve this call.
I will move.
I will second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Aye.
I talked so much, we forgot to note on it, huh?
Yeah.
It's okay. Our clerk wasn't gonna let us miss that.
No. She's on top of things.
Commissioners' report.
Well, this past Wednesday, Commissioner Lundey and I attended Lorraine County Community College to hear David Dodson speak regarding why mobility matters. And I thought it was gonna be about transit, but he really talked about reducing poverty by expanding opportunities for people and, and just how important education is to bring people out of poverty. Um, Thursday, I had my monthly stepping up meeting. Retired Justice Eve Sandberg was there to talk about all the things that are happening throughout the state to address people with mental illness and addiction issues entering our jails and prisons, and how we can divert them by, one, by using CIT officers, which is Critical Intervention Training. And the state's biggest problem is the same one that we have here in that there's, there's no facilities available to take people who are in need of medical treatment for a mental health issue. So they end up in jail, and the same holds true for people who overdose. They are revived and then taken to the emergency room and then released. So we're putting some measures in place to follow up on people with overdose, overdose patients. After they are released, we try to get them into, into treatment. Um, we have a long way to go, but we have a lot of people at the table committed to, uh, improving our processes in that respect, so. End of my report.
Wonderful. Uh, had our organizational meeting for NOACA this past Friday, late to congratulate Cuyahoga County Executive Arm Buddhist, your buddy-
Yes.
-as the new president of the organization. Also, um-
He's got some big shoes to fill, you know, that-
Adam Frederick.
President, President Calo in the past was-
No, Adam Fredericks. Shoes he has to fill from Medina. Uh, congratulations to both of the Martin Luther King Walks, City of Lorraine and Elyria. It was quite cold for both of them, uh, but a very good turnout. Again, the groups that put those together do a wonderful job honoring, uh, Dr. King. And also, uh, Dan Troy, new President of County Commissioners Association, has appointed me to the board.
Oh.
So I'll be there on Friday.
Traveling.
You and Dan Troy together, that's exciting.
Yeah, me and Troy.
Yeah. Oh, you should be having fun down there.
End of my report.
So quiet, such quiet conversations.
You're on the executive board?
No, 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 just to the board.
Okay. Um, as Commissioner Kokowski pointed out, uh, attended the Lorraine County Community College Community Session, uh, with, uh, David Dodson as the speaker, and, uh, pointed out the importance of, uh, acquiring a, uh, college education and how that makes a, a big difference in, in moving forward. Uh, Lorraine County now with its early college education is, is leading the state with high school students who are graduating with, uh, college credit. And, uh, that's a, that's a very, uh, proud thing for us to share with members in our community. Uh, we're leading in that category. And, uh, you know, Lorraine County Community College continues to just be the, the jewel of our county and continues to make a difference in so many lives. But it makes a big difference in, in eventually lifting people up out of poverty and, uh, helping them to further their lives. Um, we had a very good discussion with the, uh, the Puerto Rico Transition Group meetings that we've been having with families, uh, trying to transition here from, uh, Puerto Rico to start a new life. And, uh, because of the weather, we decided to do a conference call, but still thought it was very effective. Uh, we've actually managed, uh, through the great cooperation of Lorraine County Community College, some assistance from our marketing people with, uh, Visit Lorraine County and with, uh, El Centro, putting together, um, a, a website so that folks can gather information about Lorraine County, uh, should they decide to transition here. So I wanna thank all them for that. Uh, it's been an amazing group to work with. Uh, as Commissioner Calo pointed out, I don't think there's ever been a warm day for the MLK march. It always seems like it's one of the, the coldest days of the year, but, uh, great turnout for that. And, uh, Reverend, uh, Mark Johnson, uh, who was a former Elyria High grad, he was the main speaker, talking about the pursuit of love and humanity and stressing the importance of, uh, getting to know one another. Uh, you know, it's amazing how maybe some of us in this room have neighbors that we've never really sat down and had a conversation with, or we got people we work with who maybe, uh, you know, don't look like us and have different thoughts and opinions on things and, but, uh, the importance of just sitting down and having those conversations and, and getting to know your neighbor and your coworker can make a tremendous difference in society. And, uh, I wanna thank the County Administrator and Karen Davis, um, and all those involved in working on these major projects that we're working through here at the county. Uh, it's, uh, heavy lifting, to say the least. Lots of, uh, I's to dot and T's to cross. Um, but I, uh, just wanna thank the County Administrator and the, uh, Karen Davis, our facilities manager, for all the work being done. Uh, can't thank the voters enough for their support of the 911 Center. You know, that technology is rapidly evolving. There is nothing more important in this county than the safety of our families, and we help to take care of that through the 911 Center, also through the Drug Task Force. Uh, can't say enough about the partnership with Lorraine County Community College in making, uh, the transition, uh, for those buildings, uh, uh, workable and affordable so that it would benefit the whole county. And I can't, can't thank LCC enough, but, but for the voters, thank you for, uh, being positive-minded, uh, realizing the importance of it and, uh, helping us to continue to move forward. And on the train station, obviously, our, uh, commitment to that is, uh, when you look at the overall picture, it's a small percentage, uh, five to seven percent. And, uh, that's what people sometimes lose sight of when you start talking about federal dollars. You know, um, that's paying for the majority of this project overwhelmingly. Um, but, you know, people tell us in government to run government like a business. If you ask the business sector, they were working on a project for every $10 they put on the table. Somebody was gonna put 90 bucks on the table. I think the, uh, private sector would take that money all day long. And, uh, so we've come this far. We're gonna complete, um, the journey, and we will get there. And, uh, looking forward to making this happen.
Can I make a comment on that, on the train station for a second, Commissioner? You know, a lot of people have said, well, the train only stops here at 3:30 in the morning.
Yeah, I saw that on some of the comments online.
And, and I, I had a discussion with you yesterday on, on this, and, you, the train stops at 3:30 somewhere all over the place. The, the line, the, the Amtrak lines run from New York to Boston, New York to D- Washington DC, Washington DC to New York, et cetera, Cleveland. They go through Cleveland, they go through Baltimore, major cities. Well, guess what? Even in those major cities, they stop at 2:30 in the morning, 4 o'clock in the morning, 3 o'clock in the morning. It's not just Elyria where it stops at 3:30. In fact, the Amtrak stops in Cleveland about 15 minutes or 20 minutes bef- before it stops here in Elyria. And they have a train station. The, the, so the, the criticism that it stops in Elyria at 3:30, so who's gonna ride it, really is unfounded. It, we're not an A destination. We're not even a B destination. The A destination is New York, the B destination's Chicago, and then it flips, it's back from Chicago to New York. We're actually fortunate to be along the corridor where they will stop. There's plenty of places that would kill to have a stop in their community for a pickup of, of folks that's convenient for their community. A lot of them don't have it. If I'm not mistaken, the next stop after Elyria is Toledo, which could be quite a distance for most people to go. Um, so, you know, saying that nobody's ever going to ride the train or additional passenger service will, will not happen, I, I don't think it's really credible. Uh, most people are gonna have to get that train at, at an uncomfortable hour because, uh, that's when it's gonna stop in the outlying communities because it's going to a destination where it wants to get at a more desirable hour. So-
Didn't you say we have about 5,000 ridership?
The ridership has steadily been increasing. It's, it's, it's been increasing slowly, but, but it's been increasing. Hopefully it'll increase more. Sooner or later, this country has to wrap its head around the fact that mass transit has to have a good rail system. Uh, the, even if it's not a complete high-speed rail, it needs rail. And, and, uh, many metropolitan areas already know that because they do have pretty good rail service. I will say this about rail, and we had this conversation, I've had it with all of you at one time or another, I had it with Commissioner Lundey yesterday. No transit system, no rail system anywhere in this country is self-supporting. Nowhere is it self-supporting. It is always supported through taxpayers' dollars to improve their community. And, you know, the data's out there, and, and some- Nowhere is it self-supporting. It is always supported through taxpayers' dollars to improve their community. And, you know, the data's out there and some communities support it very, very strongly and some support it less so. Our community doesn't support it almost at all and the state of Ohio has been even worse at supporting anything to do with rail and public transportation in, in general. And, and until those things change, we're, we're not going to see the huge improvements that, that are needed. But we will be positioned and we will have the train station and Greyhound will be stopping there. Our buses, for as best we can do, will be stopping there and the train will be stopping there. And, and quite frankly, there's many train stations that were built with the hope of intermodal transportation that have no train station and no bus service.
Lorraine.
I wasn't saying anybody, but, but we will have those services and hopefully they'll be improved in the future, but we'll be prepared for that improvement. We won't be trying to catch up, but we'll be positioned for it and that's definitely a plus for our community.
Those federal dollars either end up being invested in Lorraine County or they go someplace else, similar to when Governor Kasich sent $400 million because he wanted to make a political statement back to DC and the money ended up somewhere else. I thought, was it Wisconsin or something?
It went to Utah and California.
Utah and California, but it's still going to be spent.
The money will be spent on a similar project in a different community.
That's right.
It's not going to change the expenditure, it's going to transfer it to somebody else.
Right, right.
But, you know, if we're going, we're talking about transit, one of the, one of the things that we forgot to mention many times over the last year when they had these transit conversations and the meetings was the $10 million of money we didn't get because we didn't have match money here in Lorraine County. You know, I was so busy last year, I lost the thought process on that when we were meeting with folks. We were putting that out there for quite a bit a while back. We have routinely lost funding because we couldn't match that funding locally and who was with me at the meeting, it was with one of the communities, I don't want to even name it anymore, and they walked up and thanked us for their new buses because the money we couldn't use that we had, I had, I had the dubious pleasure of signing the letter releasing the appropriation, got sent to them and they were able to buy buses and put more rolling stock into their community and provide more operation dollars because we couldn't match our dollars and their, our dollars went to them. Okay? That, that figures in excess of $10 million and growing. That money should be here in our community and it's not and that's, 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 that's really just not acceptable. And that is economic stimulus. That is economics that, that will continue to build in our community. If you only added a factor of two or three to the multiplier of that money, you can see what, what it would do. So, that, we need, we need to be, we need to figure this out. We need to keep, we need to keep it here and then bring it here. Sorry, I, I just...
Oh, no, no. I, I know the popular talk, as we've said before, is they always, the talk always is what can government cut? Here's an opportunity where we actually can double our money, you know, if we only had the matching dollars and a lot of projects to put forward and so, the problem we've run into is not being able to put the matching dollars.
Some of it's better than doubling. Maintenance money's 80/20 money.
Exactly, 80/20.
You know, rolling stock money, you know, is matching money. The, the parking ride money is 90/10. In some instances, we're using toll credits from the state, it could be 100%. We don't have to put anything in. Can't ask for, you know, for carpooling lots and parking rides because we don't, we don't have the, the, the infrastructure to support it. The, the, you see many places where people actually use the parking rides, they're not, they're not really getting on the bus. They're parking their cars and getting in a car with somebody else and they're completing the journey. There's a lot of carpooling going on. You don't see a lot of van pooling going on in northern Ohio, but you do see a lot of carpooling out of the parking rides. Well, we have actually through NOACA, the Go Ohio Commute, which is planning that way for people to come together at the parking rides and bring one vehicle into the downtown urban area. There's some of that going on in Lorraine County, but it's happening in the Walmart parking lot and the Lowell's parking lot and we're not providing a service area that's secure and, you know, that's illegitimate for them to be doing that, so those folks are subject to whatever those merchants decide to do because they're not legally really parked there. Those are things that we're missing out on that could be paid for fully if, if we could get things moving here in Lorraine County. Those are just some, you know, lost opportunities, but the biggest lost opportunity is the dollars that do not come to our community and to get into those dollars takes years. You just don't call the FTA and say, hey, I got match money now, give me some money. Doesn't work that way. Those allocations are three years out. Now, I'm saying we, we could not get into some additional allocation because other communities suffer like we do and there's usually some dollars that get reallocated throughout the year, but you have to wait in line and so, you have to build over time. Our allocations were built in the early 2000s, late 90s and our allocation has been significantly getting reduced all the way out. We'll be at the bottom of the stack and starting over again, trying to rebuild our future allocations and that'll be a slow process. Those that utilize are always in front. Those that are waiting takes, takes a while. So, just because we show up with match money doesn't mean that the federal dollars are going to be there just for our taking. That's not how it works.
Right, right. Just finally, I just wanted to comment on a story in the paper over the weekend talking about our county prosecutor's office. Chris Ponowski's done amazing work in collecting back taxes, delinquent property taxes to the tune of $15 million since 2015, along with our county treasurer, Dan Tellerick. And I know the article talked that the majority of the money goes to the schools, which is the case, but I think it's always important every time we hear stories about this to remember that the county's portion is $1.63 per $100. So, I think it's important for the public to know that just because you see that this, the county brought in $15 million in delinquent property taxes, doesn't mean that that's $15 million is going into our general revenue fund and that's something that we try to stress all the time, but I noticed it wasn't in the article. I just wanted to point it out to the public as we continue to educate the public about how county government actually works. And that completes my report. Mr. President.
Mr. President, oh my goodness.
We're on land bank at 10, more correspondence.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Skouski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Jeff, come on up.
Jeff Baxter, 160 Burns Road, Elyria, Ohio.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry. I just want to talk about commissioners and communicating with the public. I think that the announcement this morning in the, in the Chronicle about the Transportation Center is, is a good thing for Lorraine County. I think it sets us up for the future. I'm an Amtrak user. I've taken multiple trips to Boston and Chicago and Washington DC and that platform is very lonely at that time of the morning. It really is. But I don't think that the people of Lorraine County had any idea that was coming. I think they kind of considered that project was a dead project. I knew differently because I could see a little bit of information on the county website. There's been plans out there, but I don't see any project plans. Is there a, a five-year plan for Lorraine County? I mean, look at all these projects, just the ones that were mentioned this morning. Transportation Center, 911 Call Center, it's been going on for a while, Courthouse, the Drug Task Force, the Lorraine County Transit Study Project, when the results were released earlier, about, what, five, six weeks ago? You know, that's, something's coming on that, but how does that pair up with what's now going to happen with the Transportation Center? Does it? I don't know. We'll find out. I think the back tax collection is another project. That's not something that just, you know, you woke up one morning and said, we need to do this. You know, that was a dedicated project to get that work done, but I think somehow that, I think the board commissioners have got to figure out a way to get these things in front of the, of the people and let them see some of these things. The media or the, the, the social media is a, is a good place to go to. I don't think that the Lorraine County government website or website is good enough. I don't think that the interaction with social media is good enough either. I think that there are a lot of things that can be done there to improve that. Ken Carney, with his road projects, did a good thing in December. There was a publish in the December 20th, I think, December 20th, all the road projects, the big ones coming up for the year, listed everything by city, by county project, state money, all those kinds of things. That was a good thing. If something could be done like that, you know, maybe once a year to say to the voters of Lorraine County, here's the big things that we're planning on working on next year, that would help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I will make a motion and go on executive session as outlined by the county administrator.
I will second that motion.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Skouski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.